Seven o'clock.
Okay.
Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting on April 3rd of 2017 of the School Committee of the Town of Foxborough. It's 7:00 PM, so we'll get started. Our agenda for tonight is 7:00 PM visitors, 7:05 PM approval of minutes, and we have several to go through. 7:15 PM, we have a great teaching and learning highlight. We have the Foxborough High School Debate Team with Mr. Ferbert and the team. 7:30 PM, we have our School Committee vote on school choice participation with Ms. Spinelli. At 7:50, we will have our School Committee vote to approve the Foxborough Public Schools' policy manual. At 8:00, we have acceptance of actually more than one donation tonight. And at 8:05 PM, we'll take up other matters. Are there any visitors tonight who wish to be heard? No one at the table, but I do see a couple Boy Scouts from Troop 7 who are joining us tonight. I want to welcome you. The Boy Scouts generally come to do their Citizen in the Community merit badge, and also their Communication merit badge requires them to come to a public meeting. So, welcome to the Harilshu Brothers and their mom. Whenever you feel you need to head out after you've gotten your requisite time in, feel free. Okay, so then let's take up the approval of minutes. Our first set is the Joint Meeting Minutes of February 1st, 2017, and that was our joint meeting with the Advisory Committee. Does anyone have any changes to these meeting minutes? Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor approving the February 1, 2017, Joint Meeting Minutes? That's 5-0-0. Okay. Our next set are the March 8th, 2017, Joint Meeting Minutes from our meeting at that time, our special meeting with the Advisory Committee. Does anybody have any thoughts or changes on these? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from March 8th, 2017. Yes, as done.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor approving the minutes? That's 5-0-0. Okay. Our next set of minutes are the March 20th, 2017, Executive Session Meeting Minutes. Does anyone have any changes to these?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Bruce. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Bevy. Any further discussion? All those in favor? It's 5-0-0 to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to release the minutes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All those, anyone, any further discussion? All those in favor? 5-0-0 to release the Executive Session Meeting Minutes. Our last set of minutes are our Regular Meeting Minutes from the March 20th, 2017 meeting. Does anyone have any comments on this? I actually had a couple myself. I just wanted to clarify, on the first, on page one, under Special Education Programs update, the last sentence in this paragraph says CPAC co-chairs Ms. Aaron Bose and Ms. Michelle Faxton were in attendance and reported that CPAC is in its second year. I think it's in its second year under their leadership.
Under new leadership.
But not its second year. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Which page?
The very fir-, the first page.
Yep.
So, I think it's the second year of their leadership.
Yes.
On page two, and this is just picky, I'm sorry, it's grammar, but under, on page two, under Announcement of Taylor School Elementary Principal, the second sentence, I think should say Dr. Rogers joined the meeting, shared some background information, the third sentence, rather. Her experience includes 20 years in public education, and she, if we could just insert a she there, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's my English major. And then on page three, under Other Matters, I think it says, the first sentence, under Other Matters, it says, "Mrs. Spinelli discussed a recent editorial." I think the Sun Chronicle should be the Foxborough Reporter.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I said.
In the Sun, in the Foxborough Reporter?
I think it should be the Foxborough Reporter, not the Sun Chronicle.
I'll check that, okay.
It may have been in both. I know it was in the reporter.
I saw it in the reporter, that's what I mentioned.
Thank you for clarifying, Beary. So, those were my three changes. Does anybody have anything else they wanted to add? Clarify?
Motion to approve as amended.
Thank you, Bruce.
I second that.
Thank you, Marilyn. Any further discussion? All those in favor? 5-0-0 to approve the meeting minutes. Okay. Now that we're done with all that, I'd like to move on to our Teaching and Learning Highlight Debate Team.
Shall we? Well, we are well represented tonight by our wonderful students. I'm going to invite Mr. Scott Ferbert, who's the advisor, the faculty advisor for the Debate Team, and we'll also invite all of the students to push your chairs a little bit forward. So, all of access to the two wonderful microphones at the visitors' table. And they are quite an accomplished group, as some of us know, but I think this is a great example of an extracurricular, co-curricular club or activity that the public doesn't know a lot about, and why we support these things, and why are they good for kids. So, that's why you're here. Thanks, Mr. Ferbert.
Sure. Foxborough High School has been a member of the Eastern Varsity League for at least 25 years. I'm not exactly sure when we first started to participate. I know Norm Langivan was the coach for a number of years, and some of you may remember Norm, who was, yeah, a foreign language teacher in Department for a while. I've been coaching the league for about 13 years myself.
Wow.
Yeah. So, the league consists-
Thank you.
Well, thank you, yeah. It's been a lot of fun. The league consists right now of 18 schools from, really, I mean, I'll just, I can read off some of the schools from all over, Old Rochester, Hanover, Bishop Connolly, Silverlake, Bishop Fian, Cohasset, Situate, West Bridgewater, Bridgewater-Ranham, New Bedford, Bishop Stang. So, it's quite a variety of schools. The way they have the league set up is set up into two divisions, a northern and a southern division, nine schools in the northern, nine schools in the southern. And we have, there's nine rounds every year, and in certain rounds, schools within the division debate each other, and then we have an entire league debate where they line up schools from the northern and the southern divisions. So, it's very competitive. These guys will tell you, every year I get new students, they don't know what to expect, and pretty soon they get hooked because of the adrenaline that gets going when they start to debate. So, it's sort of like mental football, if you will, or gymnastics. And they can tell you more, but I think several of the things that debate is super beneficial for is definitely their reasoning skills improve, their speaking skills improve, and certainly critical thinking skills. Because they really have to think on your feet. Although you come prepared with a plan, they never know exactly how that plan's going to be attacked. So, any of you guys want to talk a little bit more about, like, what a debate, what goes on in a debate?
Yes, so there's two teams, so it's two versus two, and there's one team that's called the affirmative, which, you know, means positive. So, they come with a plan, and like, for example, that's Samea and Jessica here. And then, so what they do is they come in and they read their plan, and then the negative team, which would be me and Correlo, for example, who have never heard their plan before, have to, you know, show that it's non topical, which means it doesn't have to do with the question. It's inherent barrier, the reason why it's not currently a thing being happen, that's happening, isn't relevant, or it's solvency, it doesn't solve the issue that it presents, or the need for change, like, the reason why their plan is being presented doesn't make sense or isn't relevant. So, we knew that, like, for example, this year, the question was essentially, well, the resolve is the United States should substantially increase diplomatic and/or economic relations with the People's Republic of China. So, the negative team knows that every plan's going to be about that, but the affirmative team gets to make any plan they want about that.
So, Alex, we all know who you are.
Yeah, I know. Let me introduce you.
So, if a student could say your name and what grade you're in, because people watching at home really love that, and so do we.
Do you want to start?
Okay, so, me and Sam, we were the negative.
No, no, name, name.
I'm Dimitri Davis, and I was on the negative for the FHS VRC novice team, and me and Sam, we were a team.
But, what year are you? Name and year, please.
We're from here.
Thank you.
We came in, we came in this year, and we were completely new. We didn't really know anything about Debate Team at all. And our first debate, we didn't really know what to expect, we just kind of went with the flow, and I think we lost that debate, but after that-
No, we won. We won.
He's going to debate that.
After that debate, things really picked up, and we ended up having a really good season, and out of 48 teams, I think, we placed 10th in the novice negative division.
One of the rest of you guys introduced yourselves and give your grade. So, we know, I'll know Alex.
We know, yeah.
All right, so, I'm Correlo Shahada, I'm a senior, and this year was actually my first year in debate as well, as Alex already mentioned, I'm his partner. And, yeah, we had a pretty, I had a pretty rough start for the first debate, because once again, like, I really didn't know what exactly I was doing, I was just getting the ropes, but like, after that, like, you know, help from Mr. Ferbert and the rest of the team, like, I got better, and like, we ended up doing really well this season. Out of all the teams, we placed second overall, so.
That's great.
That's, that's over, it was about 40 teams.
Wow.
And we only have, we had two varsity and one novice. There are some schools like Situate that have six teams with, you know, many, many more teams. So, we did, these guys did a great job this year, they really did. I mean, they were undefeated going into the last round, in fact. Well, they can tell you what happened.
Yeah, we'll talk about that later.
This is a pretty good story.
Yeah, so, I'm Sam Bellinger, and I'm a freshman, I was Dimitri's partner, and he said, kind of had a rough start at the beginning, we kind of like had the hang of it, since me and Dimitri have been public speakers for a few years now, getting involved in like class government and everything like that. So, when we first got in, we didn't know quite what to expect, but we had a great year overall, and as Dimitri said, we finished 10th out of the novice negatives, and we hope to do good again next year.
I'm Jessica Hoyt, I'm a senior. This was my third year doing debate, and we were varsity affirmative and finished in fourth overall.
Oh.
Varsity affirmative, and we only lost one, and it was the first one of the season.
There's something else special about Jessica's team. You guys can say it.
Yeah, so, we actually, at the last round, oh, by the way, I'm Samea Akchar, I'm also a senior. So, at the last round, we actually went against their team. So, it was Foxborough against Foxborough.
Wow.
And they were undefeated, and we had one loss, and at the end, it was a really great debate, but at the end, I came down to the judge, and they picked us over that. But, either way, it was a great debate.
What a way to end the season.
That's exciting.
That's amazing.
That's one of the, they really, they do power ranking for the final five debates, they take, just like you would, the number one against 10, two, nine, and just ended up where they matched up, which isn't the perfect scenario, because, you know, we don't want, I don't want either one to lose, and neither one really wanted the other one to lose either, but that's just the way it is. But that just shows you where debate, it's very competitive, so although they didn't want, neither one wanted to lose either, so they went into that debate, both of them wanting to win regardless of it was Foxborough against Foxborough, so they did a fantastic-
I'm sure every, I'm sure every other district representative would like to have two top teams in finals.
Yes, yeah, yeah, and again, we only had two varsity teams, so we were represented out of all the schools, 19 schools. They did, they did really, really an amazing job this year.
And I'm Gabby Shokuski. I'm a junior, and this is my second year with debate. Both years I've been negative, and this is my first year as a varsity.
Lovely. So, what's the story, and tell me about the trophy?
So, we, Correlo and I consider ourselves Hockemock champs because, because we didn't lose to a single school besides Foxborough, like, every other team, essentially, so, I mean, of the entire Hockemock, we haven't lost to anyone except for Foxborough, so, you know, that's what we consider ourselves. But, for some reason, they gave us the second place trophy, which I'm confused about, but, all right, what are you going to do? So, we did get an excellent second place trophy, but overall, we came home with six awards, three of which were trophies, and that's collectively as a team. So, that was, that was pretty cool.
That's awesome.
So, Dimitri got one, right?
Yeah, I got eighth place speaker in the novice negative division.
And that's probably out of, they give it was the top 10, but out of the novice negatives, there's at least 40, 40 negatives.
And you came in eighth?
And he came in eighth.
Congratulations.
In each debate, there's, a debate is two against two, 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 I know Alex went over this, two students representing one school in the affirmative, they come in with a plan that they are, their, their job is to convince the judge that their plan is fantastic and flawless. Then there's two negatives from another school, and their job is simply to find some, one problem with that plan and convince the judge that there's one reason, we call them stock issues, there's main, there's four, five stock issues, but I won't bore you with those, but anyways, so, the negative only has to find one flaw with that. And it's competitive, each judge, there's a ballot, there's a judge, I judge, usually the judges are parents, or teachers, or coaches, which are usually teachers at schools. So, there's a, there's a very specific ballot, there's a, each student is ranked, each one is ranked from one to four, there's also a scoring system that goes up to, I think 30 points is the highest. So, each, each debater for each round, they're judged, they're ranked, so there's this individual score, a team score, a ranking, and then a winner, a loser. So, when we say, you know, Dimitri came in eighth, that means that his speaker points were in terms of total, and sometimes the difference between eighth and seventh or sixth is a, is a point, or a fraction of a point. So, it becomes really, really close.
Wow.
And the fact that they came in second, I mean, it was just a really, really good season, or they did a fantastic job, as they always do.
Now, the affirmative side, do you, do you use the same plan all the way through the debate season, and you just fine tune it as you go along, or do you change it, shift it around as you go?
Yeah, exactly what you said, basically. So, we do have the same plan, and then we just kind of change it around a little bit throughout the year.
Tweak it, depending on the, where the weak points are that are pointed out by the negative side?
Yeah.
And the negative side, you have to anticipate what plans are going to come at you, so you have, pretty much have to be prepared for everything?
Essentially. Yeah, the key, the key to the negative, the key to the debate overall is, is we really stress the use of evidence. It's, certainly logic is important, and the ability to argue, make a logical argument, and find some flaw with a plan that's a logical flaw, but a lot of times, plans, these plans, these guys go, they're, well, I mean, we have, there's kids that spend months writing plans. A plan can be several pages long, it includes evidence, so to win a debate, you have to also, not only do you have to have evidence, whether it be negative, you have to have evidence that contradicts the evidence of the affirmative. Or the affirmative may have evidence, the negative needs to ask to see that evidence, and then they will look at the evidence, and they'll critique it. Now, all this is timed, so they only have so much time. Each debate lasts about an hour and a half, would that be correct? Yeah, starts off, yeah. So, the debates are about an hour and a half, they're being timed, they have eight minutes of prep time that they can use whenever they want. So, I mean, they really are thinking on their feet. This is very much, you know, extemporaneous, critical thinking, reasoning.
Wow.
The best debaters are able to do that. Would you guys agree? Because they're not only listening to what the other team is saying, but they're taking notes in it, and then trying to figure out, what are we going to do to counter this?
Wow.
So, it really requires a lot of, a lot of thinking, a lot of skills, so, I mean, they did great.
Wow.
It's such a great activity for any student.
Really? I, I was really lucky, I got to see Dimitri and Sam debate this year, and I was very impressed by it. As a lawyer, I just love this stuff, so it was exciting for me.
Yeah, there's still a lot of future lawyers.
And next, you will be very interested in what next year's topic is for the affirmative.
Yeah, so I'll read you the resolution for next year, and then maybe you guys can have a little debate over it if you want. So, every year, there's a new resolution that's proposed, and the resolution is basically the topic that the affirmative team must devise a plan around. Now, although our other affirmative team isn't here, what was, this, I'll read you what this year's was, and then you guys can tell what else is.
Oh, yeah.
Because that's a unique, we just show you how unique the plans can be. The more outside of the box your plan is, the more unique it is, the harder it is for the negative team to find evidence. Okay, so this year's resolve was the US federal government should substantially increase its economic and/or diplomatic engagement with the People's Republic of China. Right? That was the issue, yeah. So, the affirmative team, now, that can be addressed in multiple ways, right? There's many, many ways. So, Yass is not here, neither is Tom, but their plan was essentially-
So, they're, so Yass and Tom aren't here, like you said, but their plan was pretty much, well, currently, the United States can't own pandas, China's the only country on earth that can own giant pandas, so their plan was to pretty much buy, permanently buy pandas from China, so, you know, make them unendangered by buying them from China. And nobody really knows anything about panda law or panda legislation, so it's really hard to like take that down.
It's groundbreaking, right there.
Yeah.
Is it only the giant pandas? How about a red panda?
Red pandas, I think they live in other countries, but you don't have, like I said, I don't, I don't know nothing about it.
No, it's literally, I think, bottom of China. I'm very curious. You have me interested already, so just giant pandas, because they belong to-
I believe so, just the black and white ones.
So, you can tell you work the negative side.
So, that's why we have to send them back if they're born to a certain age.
So, now, that plan on pandas, they have to explain why that's topical, why it meets this topic, they have to explain why, why there isn't a law right now, there has to be an inherent barrier, a reason why that law doesn't exist. A lot of times, those are treaties that exist, it can be attitude rule as well, like, there's a general attitude against working with China because of the tensions and trade and negotiations and things like that. So, there's the barrier, what else am I forgetting? It has to solve the problem, it has to some way solve the problem.
So, that's, so that's to be a need for change, so the need for change, like in this case, is pandas are endangered, so then the solvency, which Mr. Ferbert was talking about, is it needs to solve the need for change, so they need to prove that their plan's going to make pandas, it's going to, you know, make them less protected and less endangered species, which is kind of hard to prove sometimes, but usually you, you build your plan around that.
Yeah, so that's how the plan is, you come up with an idea, and usually every year we'll start with just brainstorming a bunch of ideas, throw everything up there, like the panda idea might be silly at first, but in the end, hey, that's, that's unique, it's different, you know? Because some common ones, the more common it is, the easier it is to find evidence. It's hard for a negative team to come in prepared for pandas. But there are general arguments, negatives can always go after. So, Samea and Jessica, talk about your plan. So, they, again, same resolve, but they came up with a totally different plan on a totally different subject.
So, what's next year's resolution? Oh, are they going to talk?
Yeah, just briefly, what was the top, you don't have to explain the whole thing, but what was your, you were going, how were you going to do this with China?
We were going to use, we were going to make an agreement to use algae as an alternative energy source to coal, which not only like solves the CO2 problem and global warming issue, because algae has a net CO2 released to zero, but it also solves the surplus of algae that exists in China, and to a lesser degree in the US, which is actually poisoning drinking water, and like killing off species.
High level. Impressive.
Yeah, I mean, these are just two of many, many plans, so it requires a lot of research, a lot of preparations, and then, you know, the best teams really know their, they don't just know their, but they know a lot about the plan and what's, you know, in addition to what's in there, and they learn a lot too. So, this year's resolution is the US federal government should substantially increase its funding and/or regulation of elementary education and/or secondary education in the United States.
It's a timely topic.
You might find that both timely and relatable. So, maybe we'll get some very good ideas.
I think you have a whole board of advisors here that might want to help you with developing your case.
Now, a team, now, remember, the affirmative, that's the affirmative team's job, is to create a plan that addresses that.
Right.
The negative team's job is to find fault with that. So, the negative teams will be out, and I'm sure they already are in some schools, gathering evidence, why we should not do that, looking at, shall we say charter schools and other alternatives, rather than spending money on public education, should that money be going other places, would it be better invested, so, that's the issue.
I really look forward to hearing.
So, maybe, maybe some of you guys should come to the debate, if you can judge.
I wouldn't want to judge.
Can you imagine, as a panel of judges on a- I think that would be fascinating.
They're too good. I used to judge for Mr. Langivan.
Yeah.
But, boy, the better the team got, the less I wanted to judge it, it is really difficult.
It becomes, yeah, it becomes difficult, and you have two really good teams.
Absolutely.
Wow. Any, any questions for the kids?
Many congratulations, no questions.
Very impressive.
I have two questions. Is this a year-round activity, guys?
Practices and like meetings, just at the school, are pretty much year-round until like early spring, when the actual competition season's over, but the, just the competitions are just starting winter. So, we prepare up and through the spring, we prepare through the fall for those, but then they start in like early December and go through February.
Yeah, we start in September, we start a couple weeks into school, start meeting, then we go to the end of the year, and then we usually, sometimes we'll meet a couple times to talk about the resolution, and the seniors are leaving and stuff, so, but it goes right through February, March.
Okay, my second question is, are you allowed to use tools during the one and a half hour debate, like your cell phones and Google?
Good question.
No, you're not, you're allowed to have like a phone for a timer, if you want to keep time yourself.
But you can't Google stuff, you can't-
No.
Yeah, that's one of the really hard things, because you actually have to have all of your evidence printed out, like me and Sam, we went into the debates with a huge folder, like, full of 200 pages, full of stuff, because one of the tactics from the affirmative team is to try and make a really, really obscure plan that you would never think about, so that they catch you with zero evidence, and basically, any argument that you have has to be backed up with evidence, so if you have an argument that, you know, is for a really random topic, you basically can't use it if you can't back it up at all. So, you have to have everything printed out with you.
You have to produce your evidence, right?
And they have to provide their evidence, so if I was a judge in the debate, and the affirmative team read, read their, their plan, and then they read a piece of evidence, and the negative team says, could we see that evidence, and they didn't have it, then I would disregard the evidence. It's not evidence if I could just, as if we were in, it's very much like, like a court of law, in that evidence is essential, the better the evidence, so, all right, you give me the evidence, and then they say, well, this is from, you know, conservative, you know, radical.com, and it's, you know, says that global warming is a farce. Well, how legitimate is that evidence? It's up to the negative and the affirmative team to question the evidence, the judge is an impartial person, and we sit on the sidelines, we do not get involved in the debate, we do not ask questions, we're just a fly on the wall, and they, they take control of the debate themselves. So, evidence is really, really key, and I think that's really important, it's also a learning experience where we realize you have to question what we see all the time.
Wow. So, the thoroughness of their preparation, they have to really have investigated and prepared as many dimensions of that problem as they possibly can, even if they don't think they're going to use it, because they may end up having to.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, because in our, our second debate, me and Dimitri, we just won our first one, and in our second debate, the opposing team's plan was a joint task for us to fight poaching in Africa with China, like, to go and hunt down poachers in Africa. So, we have no evidence on this, we're expecting like plans about climate change and like emissions, and economics, and labor unions, and the such, and we get hit with this totally obscure plan, to the point where Dimitri, when he says that it would be a bad idea because rebels in Syria that are being armed by the US government, it would be a similar program to that, and that program hasn't worked, so this program wouldn't work, and the, the opposing team knew we didn't have that evidence on us, and they're like, yeah, so, so they said, can you provide any evidence of that? And Dimitri's like, well, no, but you've seen it on the news, it's obviously happening, and they're like, no it isn't, because you don't have evidence, so.
Oh.
So, we made sure to have a lot more after that.
But first, they were just kind of learning experiences.
Yeah.
Yeah, it really doesn't matter how much, like we went to some mock debates and you can tell the kids, but until you're actually in the debate, right, we can talk about, we did mock debates, till they actually do it, it's, they give you sort of, you get it and it makes sense. And then, like I said, the kids get hooked every year once they do it. Because it's competitive. You know, it's right, isn't it competitive? You want to win. You want to prove that maybe your plan, you're smarter than them, you reason better than, than the other team. So there's, just to reiterate, they can't use their phones and they cannot use any visual aids either. It's strictly debate. Yeah, that's it. It's just, yep.
Any other questions, comments?
I see Mrs. Myers-Peck was here to support you guys. I don't know if you wanted to add anything about why kids should want to participate in something like this?
It's just, it's fabulous, putting everything together. It's the, it's the research, it's all the skills. It's all the skills that you all need. So you go out, you research, you have to think on your feet, you have to be able to articulate. It's just fabulous. And to come up with that counterargument, again, is just, you know, the brain's gotta be working the whole time with it. So I commend all of you. I was so excited when I was hearing about the, using the algae and all of that earlier in the show. I was like, oh my goodness, who thinks of these things? And I love the panda, it's not the park, it's leading around as well too, so on the other side of it. But just what an opportunity. And then to see other teams and to be going up against other teams across the United, not the United States, but across the, this part of Massachusetts, it's just, it's phenomenal, you know? I think you grow from that and learn from that by watching others as well. So I'm just, who are we gonna replace these seniors with next year? So you wonder class can start recruiting.
We will, we will.
The questions too are so pertinent to now, it's not just something kind of irrelevant out there, but you know, it's something that's, that is the here and now.
Yeah, in the past, there's been space exploration, increasing space exploration, deep sea ocean exploration. Do you guys remember the other ones from past years? Ocean, space.
I just remember oceans and.
There was increased.
Surveillance. Oh, last year was decreasing domestic surveillance.
Yeah, it's always pertinent. It usually starts with five potential resolutions. And then the, the coaches, I'm not part of the National Forensic League, but I think it's run by the National Forensic League, the coaches that are part of that. Because we're our own little entity, ourselves, within our, we have our own league. What a lot of schools will do that are part of the National Forensics League is they, they debate on the weekends, on Saturdays. Our, our, our league is really unique in that we are able to debate local schools. It's really something special that is not out there. And Danny, was Norm one of the, and I don't want you to put you on the spot, but was Norm one of the original coaches in the league?
I think so.
Yeah. And I had guessed about, I was saying it's been about 25 or 30 years. Yeah, I'd say about 25, maybe even been longer than 25 or 30 years.
I can tell you I was on the team for the evening night.
Right, yeah.
I was just thinking.
Mrs. Rilson, this is a perfect meeting for you to be at.
I still have the first couple of lines from when I was on the affirmative team and it was jail. I can still tell you what the first line is.
Yeah, great, yeah. Yeah, so the, this, this league is, it's growing, it has grown. A number of schools have joined. Bridgewater, Rainham joined, West Bridgewater has joined in the last five years.
Cohasset was one of the originals.
Cohasset, probably Cohasset, Situate, New Bedford.
Yeah. We used to go to Tabor too.
And Tabor, Tabor's not in the name of it, but there are a couple of private schools that, that are still part of it. So, and honestly, the, the league itself is, as I said, it's very unique, it's a wonderful opportunity. There isn't really a lot around that I know of like our league. A lot of schools belong to the National Forensics League, which is different than what we do.
Wow, amazing.
It's a great opportunity.
Do the seniors think you'll continue this when you go on to college?
I definitely think that it helped me with public speaking and everything.
Oh, yeah.
In the beginning, I didn't do my first year of high school because I wasn't really sure I'd, I'd be okay with like speaking out loud and everything. But after doing it that first year, like Mr. Ferber said, you really get hooked onto it. And you just want to go back and keep doing it. And in the process, you learn how to really articulate and how to speak well. And so that's a really good skill to have for college as well.
Absolutely.
What about you, Jessica?
Well, well, the public speaking thing applies here too, because I used to be, still am, kind of really shy, but not as much. And then also, in terms of developing the plan and gathering research, it's, it's a good way to collaborate with other people without it being for like a grade, where there's that sort of like pressure. Yeah.
I know Sam and Dimitri are gonna do this next year. What about you, Gabby? Are you gonna continue? Affirmative or negative for you?
I'm like negative.
Taken after your brother.
Sometimes they switch. Sometimes you guys were negative last year, right? And you did affirmative, so.
That's good to try both sides of an argument, absolutely.
Especially the seniors, you know, they, they run the opportunity to sort of decide what they want to do. And it usually works out that way.
That's great.
So we need to keep recruiting and growing. And every year, it seems like we usually have about the same amount, say around 14 students. It's small. We have so many things to offer here, Foxborough, with all the different clubs and all the sports. And, you know, obviously music and band, it could be a conflict. It has, I've had students that have been part of band and they've managed to fit it in, but it's not easy. It's not easy. So, you know, I commend these guys with everything that they do beyond and, you know, I mean, look at the, you know, a number of these kids taking AP courses and other clubs and, and, and music or whatever it is, to still be able to do this and do such a great job, it's, it's really, really remarkable.
We all learned a lot.
Absolutely.
Very, even more impressive than I thought. I'm amazed.
Well, thank you all for coming and sharing.
You're welcome.
Really wonderful job. Very impressive. And who wouldn't know what I mean? It's obviously not a plant to have a parent in the audience.
I know. That was good.
I know people are gonna think that, but that was an amazingly wonderful coincidence.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
That was fun.
By the way, everyone, I do unfortunately need to go now, because I'm driving Carlos and Gabby home. And also, I'm pretty sick. I think I have the West Nile Fever.
Oh, we'll feel better. Thank you for calling.
Just take your coughing right home to the privacy of your own home.
Unfortunately, it's now all over Foxborough.
That was, that was very impressive.
Barry, do you have a question?
Actually, very quick. Barry Dunough, Foxborough reporter. Turns out that red pandas are actually Indian, Nepal, and Bhutan, Bangladesh as well as China.
Just clarify.
Also, not really very related at all.
Also, giant pandas are no longer endangered, but that happens.
Pause the creativity.
That's from the debate.
Which is why we need to stop this whole deal with we have to send them back if they're endangered. So I'm totally favorable.
That was a good teaching and learning highlight.
It was great.
Very much. All right, moving on. Our next item on our agenda is the school committee vote on school choice participation.
Yes.
At our last meeting, we, we had this as an agenda item and we determined to table it, to do some further research and have a little bit more extensive discussion about the matter of school choice. I know I've done some research, I know you did, I know Mr. Yuchna did and Mr. Connolly. So we're ready to talk a little bit more about it.
I'm ready.
Okay.
I'll just start by saying I'm glad we had the opportunity to research it further, because if, you know, sometimes it is an annual item that comes up all the time and we talked about it before, but I think in this case, since it's been a while since we actually reiterated the reasons why it was, I, I even learned a lot by doing fresh research.
Absolutely.
And I think, I think we all did. And I, I feel much more comfortable with where we are in the discussion, because I, I think in the end, I appreciated the opportunity to go back and research a little bit more. And as you mentioned, we've all done our piece of the, of the homework, so to speak. And so we're here to add some information to that.
Absolutely.
Where would you like to start?
Well, I think the tuition is probably the place to start right now.
Yes.
The tuition cap at $5,000.
So that is, so there's a state regulation that caps the tuition at $5,000 or 70, 75% of your average cost for education of a student, whichever is less. So in our case, I did confirm with the Department of Ed that the cap, the tuition cap for us is $5,000 per student. Yes. So if we were to take students in from another community, that's the amount of tuition money that we.
Total amount.
That's the total amount that we receive per student. And our per pupil right now is around 15,000.
15,000.
About 15,000.
A little over 15,000, I think.
Correct. So that was, that was part of the discussion. The other part of the discuss, you want me to keep going? Please do, doesn't matter. I'm gonna sum up some of the discussions that we've had. There aren't not, these are not my personal feelings, they're discussions and conclusions that we reached, I'd say, as a group, all doing our own research. That there was a feeling that because of the fact that we're only getting the $5,000 per student and that any student that comes here is a permanent student in the district, so we become the district.
Until they graduate from high school.
Correct. So this could potentially be a 13-year commitment, or if they entered in second grade, that would be an 11-year commitment or whatever you want to say. So once accepted, we, we cannot decide they need to go back to the sending district, whether our numbers change, whether our class sizes change, it won't matter. They become equal members of our student district, of our school district. So given that, it has the potential to diminish resources for Foxborough students. So if you think, when we talk about resources, we're not just talking about paper and books, clearly. We're talking about services, we're talking about reading services, math services, other kinds of services that, that, that we offer our students. So given that context, our discussion was that we, we couldn't determine a lot of value added for the Foxborough resident students. And I think anytime we do anything, whether it's participate in the MECO program or participate in other programs, that we have to determine there's a value added, I think, for Foxborough residents, because that's who we're beholden to for taxpayer purposes and the people who live in this community and raise their children here. The other thing is that the, the school choice system is based on a lottery. So if we were to say identify X number of slots in a particular grade level or a particular school, then let's say there are three slots and 10 people put their name in, then it's strictly a lottery system. It's a blind lottery system. So that has the potential for incurring additional costs for students with individual education plans, or IEPs as we call them, who require more services well over the, the finances that we receive. There is an additional, addition to the tuition that could be anywhere from a few hundred to 1,000 to maybe up to $6,000 additional.
Depending on the services.
Depending on the services. But even then, it's sort of, I think the max we heard of is about $11,000 for any community that we researched that receives a student from another. And that doesn't, that doesn't even come close to our average cost per student, never mind our average special education cost. So there is a little bit of an offset, but, but not. So it has the potential for us having students who do require additional services, going back to the original point about perhaps diminishing, diminishing resources for Foxborough students. I think, I mean, there were several, we did a lot of research, just so people know about. Bill can, actually has some data on the, the communities who do participate in school choice. And there were many positives about it for some districts, there are many negatives. I guess, before Bill gives you some numbers, I, I would sum up the, the overall feeling on all of the districts we talked to. Bill talked to several business administrators, I talked to several superintendents. And of, of all the districts we talked to, those that were positive about school choice, basically, all of them were consistent, saying they did it for district survival. Either in numbers of students they had, they don't have a viable number of students, that's where Bill comes in, to even stay open as a district or for financial survival. They needed a way to fund technology, for example. So they started it in order to get money to buy technology devices. So all of them talked about that, that district's survival, which also includes a few of the districts in this area, not, not immediately around us, but say in the South Shore area. They actually looked to start it to refill seats they had lost through competition. So they were losing too many students to charters, voc tech schools, others, private schools, and they had to refill the seats in order to stay viable. So all of them were around that theme of district survival. So Bill, I know you did some research on that.
And a couple of them are actually very stunning. You get it very quickly as to why they had to do it. Avon has 250, I'm sorry, 526 resident students, and they brought in 188 through choice. So they were graduating classes of 40, going through the process. Very hard to have any of the courses that, that we were fortunate to have in APs and stuff like that, because you just don't have the numbers to even make the class survive, let alone the core courses that you have to, to do as well. So in that case, the entire district, you know, it was, you know, 500 children without school choice. So.
K through 12.
K through 12.
Right.
West Bridgewater, which actually Chris brought up as a, as a good, you know, a good option for Brockton and other towns in that area, without school choice, they were 1,069 students. With school choice, which they brought in 218 under school choice, they got up to 1,287. Again, you're graduating relatively small classes and having the resources and the needs as far as technology and, and even course selection. When you get too small, it is a very tough thing to do. In talking to Medway, who's been doing it for a while, they bring in 75 to 90 students. They do have 2,700 students in their district. But again, with Medway and Norton, the, the real driver for doing that was they were not able to garnish taxpayer support to do some of these programs, like the technology things that they needed. And the only real financial option that the school committee had, that they had under their control, was school choice. So they could raise money outside of the tax dollars for the school district by going this direction, obviously understanding the potential for the, the responsibilities and the problems that could go wrong as well for them, but it was their only choice that they had. And in this case, Norton used the entire amount of money, about 280,000, just for technology, because otherwise they wouldn't have been able to advance their schools. So, you know, really, the, the reality is what I saw in, in most of them was either very small districts that, you know, again, without the added students, didn't have a viable school system. Or districts that had financial constraints to such a point that they couldn't survive without and then provide the basics that we all consider required for today's education.
Thank you for that summary. Does anyone have any questions? Additional questions on the?
Sounds pretty open and shut.
I have one question.
Yeah, absolutely.
So as a district, I know you guys, we'll get the $5,000 and a normal Foxborough student, the state pays us 15.
Roughly is our average.
Where does that money go? Does the sending district keep the 10,000? Does the state keep the money?
I'm not sure of what you're asking.
Oh, you mean the delta between the per pupil spending and the, and the, what is allotted under choice?
Change my, my thought.
Well, no, that's our average cost for educating students here. So there's no actual, that's not actually money that's paid out of anything. So our, so when you take our expenses and divide it by the number of pupils we have, that's how you get the average cost. So if you don't have, so let's say the sending district has five fewer students because of school choice, their average cost, their expenses are still the same, divided by five fewer students. So that, there's not actually part of money that follows them. It's not, that's not state money coming in.
That's not the state.
No, it's just whatever your calculated cost is for pupil. You know, but one thing I didn't add, it just reminded me, you know, we, we have, you know, we've participated in the MECO program since its inception decades, decades ago. And as you know, you read in the paper, there's always legislators, governor, local districts are always pushing for more funding for MECO. And, and we, I think you've always read that that's not fully funded. And that tuition is, we actually get 6,400 per pupil and we know that that's not enough. So we'd have to have a compelling reason for participating in another program that brings in even that much less. All the superintendents I spoke to, and the West Bridgewater superintendent personally said, you know, what's your compelling reason? Like what, you have to have a compelling reason for doing this, what would that be? And I said, oh, I don't know, we're just researching the pros and cons and trying to figure out if it suits us or not. So I, I can't figure out a compelling reason.
I, I didn't see one when, when we went through the exercise of doing the research. I, I couldn't figure out what, what would be the basis that we would do this, given that the, the tuition was capped at $5,000. And I, I looked on the DOE website, and the districts that have, that, that are around us in this area, most of our neighbors, most of the other schools in the Hockamock League are not choice participating districts either. So I, I would like to keep us on equal footing with.
I think, I think there was also one other thing that we didn't mention was Franklin. Franklin actually went school choice and then pulled out of it because exactly one of the issues that Deb spoke to earlier were, it is a true lottery. So virtually any parent from any other district that would like to send their child here, no matter what their child's needs are.
Right.
The receiving district, if they pull that name, has to deal with it. And in Franklin's case, it became an actual cost to them.
Cost to them.
To have school choice, because of some of the student body that they were getting.
Correct. They didn't mention that.
So that does create a, that can.
They actually participated for four years and eliminated in 2006 and have not gone back. They, they did feel it, she, I spoke to her in person as well. She said she felt it was a Band-Aid, and she's been in that district for all of those years and was there then. Said it was a Band-Aid, we thought it was going to be a, a good move, but it was a very short-term gain, term gain, and we actually incurred a lot of expenses.
In the long term.
In the long term. So she said, we stopped doing it.
Who pays for the transportation also?
Well, the parent does.
Yeah, transportation is not included.
The other student?
Right.
So there's no.
It's the family's responsibility to get the student to the school.
Right. That was one question I forgot to ask.
And when Franklin got rid of it, those kids that were there.
They have to stay.
They can be educated.
Their grandfather didn't.
Well, they have to stay.
Right.
Once they're committed.
Once they're committed.
They just chose not to continue on receiving new school choices.
Good question.
And they have, and that's been 11 years now, they eliminated it.
Right.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we not participate in school choice.
I'll second that motion.
All right. All those in favor of opting out of school choice?
If I may, can I just ask, if there's any more discuss?
Yes, thank you.
I want to make sure.
Any further discussion?
I do think it was a valuable exercise to ask the question.
Sure. I know I learned a lot.
Get the concrete numbers.
Did you have, want to have any more discussion?
Nope, I'm good.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, that's a good point. On all counts, I know, I, I definitely learned even more about choice than the options before us, but I, I just, I feel pretty strongly that it's not a good plan for this town.
That being said, we have a motion on the table. In a second, all those in favor of opting out of school choice in Foxborough? 5-0-0. Thank you, thank you for the summary.
No, thank you.
This is finale. All right. And thank you, Chris, for having us delve deeper into the topic. All right. Our next agenda item is the school committee vote to approve the Foxborough Public Schools' policy manual. This is something we do annually. Debbie, I know you've been our policy guru for many years. This is something we have to do by, by statute, is approve our own policy manual. And it doesn't mean that our policy evaluation is done. We're always on, we're always evaluating and, and updating throughout the year.
And one of the things that, when we signed up with the program, it was extensive work redo everything. But it came with the partnership that we get alerted anytime we really need to beef up something or create a brand-new policy. And as of the past few months, it's been very quiet.
In the policy.
In the, in the policy.
Knock on venue.
Yeah, yeah. Shh, don't say it.
That actually is an invaluable service that ASC does.
That was one of the best things, this school committee.
Because, it is. Because, you know, it's hard for any set of people, no matter how committed you are, to, to understand every piece of legislative action that occurs and how it affects local policy and, and to, and they frame it for you. So then they send it to us and to the committee, they frame the issue, what's been changed, why it should be changed, and why it should be reconsidered at the local level. And I find that invaluable.
It is. So we're very fortunate to, I think we can go ahead and move to approve our present manual.
Would you like to make that motion?
I will make the motion to approve our manual, as it has been updated regularly.
I'll second that.
One bit of discussion, just for the record, are we voting to approve our current manual for the past school year? Are we voting our manual for the future school year?
Annually, you have to vote your manual, that you, basically, you're still standing behind your policies annually. And I think the purpose.
Policies as stated as present.
You, you would know it better, but I, my understanding is the purpose is that, so that you, so that policies don't get ignored, and they must be revisited on a regular basis so that you still have their, they still have your blessing, basically.
I know we do this annually, it just strikes me as interesting, you know, when you think about it, that we've had a policy manual in place for however many months of the school year, and we're voting in April to approve her. But I think it's symbolic as much as anything.
It's not, I don't think you're newly approving it. They, they exist and they're in regulation now. I think it forces a committee to look, to, to say annually, you're still behind them.
Yeah, the timing to me is what's interesting.
Oh, I see.
You know, to do it in April seems, if, if you, if you measure that to the current, and I'm just making an observation, we do this every year, but anyway.
I'd venture to guess that they do it at this time, because you probably get hit with policies as we did at the beginning of the year, based on changes in the legislative side. So it gives you some time to actually get those enacted and voted on.
And, right.
Oftentimes, things have to be in place.
And they want you to have your policy, policies current before the next fiscal year starts on July 1st. So I don't, I don't know what other time, I was, when you were saying that, I wonder what other time with you would be better?
Right.
Because if you voted them in the fall, then you could maybe ignore the updates that come in. Because it's typically the fall when they're really, really busy.
A lot of times, you have to have things done before January 1st. That's when new laws sometimes go into effect on the first of the year, and so they give you that amount of time to, to get your.
Well, it's a regulation, so I must, there must be a reason. If anybody wants to research that, I'm sure.
It's a good question. I think it's more of a, a, you know, reapproval or continuing approval of our current policies.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving our Foxborough Public Schools' policy manual? 5-0-0. Thank you. All right. Moving on to acceptance of donations. Always a good agenda item.
Put that in plural now.
Yes. So, do I have Foxborough Skates? Do you have? Oh, here it is. You know why? I put more school choice things in there. Here we go.
All right.
Yeah, let me go back. So we actually have three. So if, if the committee wouldn't mind, we'll do the first one that we published, and then we just received the others, and I'll ask you if you want to go ahead and approve those, find out about them tonight. So we have a very generous donation from Foxborough Skates made out to Foxborough High School in the amount of $600 for hockey transportation, which, as we all know, is expensive, because every match is outside of Foxborough High School, because we don't have ice.
And in this, and in this particular one, what they were doing was getting the coach buses for the tournaments.
Yeah.
Where, so.
They were at a considerable distance, too, from the school, yeah.
So that's a very generous way to support our hockey team. So I have a motion to accept.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the check in the amount of $600 for the Foxborough High School hockey transportation from Foxborough Skates.
With gratitude.
With gratitude. We always have to add that.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the donation? 5-0-0. Thank you, Foxborough Skates.
Would you like the, the other two?
Yes, I, I, well, I have no objection. If, if, if the committee has no objection, I think we should go ahead and accept these donations.
Okay. So the first one.
Look at the donations.
All right. The first one is from the Partners in Patriotism, where, as everyone knows, it's a very generous fund from the Kraft Group, the New England Patriots, in the amount of $650 made out to Foxborough Public Schools for the World Language and Culture Night, which is coming up, called Fiesta del Norte. And it is taking place in early April, so it's Monday.
Next Monday night.
It's Monday night. It's a week from tonight.
Six to eight.
And they are funding the musical, there's always a musical component or cultural.
Or dancing.
Musical. So they are funding that for their foreign language department, which is very generous.
That is very generous. Would someone like to make a motion to accept the amount, the check in the amount of $650 from Partners in Patriotism?
I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Bruce. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of accepting the donation of $650 for World Culture, Language and Culture Night? 5-0-0. Thank you, Partners in Patriotism Fund, and we're not done yet.
We are not. So the Partners in Patriotism Fund has also very, very, very generously, three adjectives, agreed to fund the high school DECA. As we know, that we have a few students who made it to Nationals again, the second year and year two. So the, the Nationals are in Anaheim, California, internationals actually, this year, and so they are very generously funding $5,500 to the DECA club for their national, for their international competition.
Extremely generous.
Yes. Otherwise, you know, in most communities, families bear the brunt of, of that. So individual students who have achieved to that level, it really depends on family finances, whether they can actually take advantage of that. And I, I am very grateful to them in Foxborough for making these kinds of things available to kids and not dependent on families' ability to pay.
And they generously did it last year.
They did.
That's right.
For Tennessee.
That is right.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the check in the amount of $5,500 from Partners in Patriotism Fund for the Foxborough High School DECA Program District and State Competitions.
Thank you, ma'am.
With gratitude, very much gratitude.
Much gratitude, yes.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the donation? 5-0-0. Right, thank you. It is fortuitous that we had those two donations tonight. I got this in the mail today.
Perfect timing.
And moving on to other matters, I thought I would bring, well, this is hot off the presses, this came in today's mail.
Mine came today, too.
And I, I did want to point out that one of, they summed up, and this is the Partners in Patriotism newsletter that we, as Foxborough residents, get two or three times a year. And it's a, it's a great summary of all the good things that the Kraft Group and the Partners in Patriotism Fund are doing for our community. But I have circled right here where they, they have given over $225,000 total in the town of Foxborough to the, the town, community efforts, individuals, organizations, but $53,000 of that has gone directly to Foxborough Public Schools' projects.
Causes.
It causes efforts, competitions.
PTO, I know PTOs have applied.
And so I, I wanted to say again, what a wonderful, thank, thank the Kraft Group and Partners in Patriotism for their generosity, and they've made some things happen that might not otherwise have been possible.
They sure have.
And we are certainly grateful for their partnership with us in the community, so.
You know, actually, I'm glad you said that, because, and held that up, because to clear up, one thing that I've been asked about, just to clear confusion, is the schools, meaning us, we never apply directly to the, that's not, they are not a funding source for our Foxborough Public Schools' budget. So we do not apply as a public school. I've never figured out a Partners in Patriotism grant application, neither has the school committee. These are individual student clubs, activities.
Boosters.
Boosters, PTOs, you know, those kinds of organizations that, or, or specific activities, could be an athletic group, whatever it is, they apply individually. I don't know about them. So when, when we have school-related things applying to Partners in Patriot, I don't actually know about it, for the most part, unless somebody happens to mention to me, oh, I put in a, a pit grant for that. Okay. So that, it's not, I think there's a misconception that sometimes the schools apply for those, and that, that's not true. We do not consider them a funding source for us.
But we are very grateful that they have contributed to our different.
Oh, my goodness, yes. Absolutely.
Organizations here at the school. It's wonderful. All right. So that's how we're kicking off other matters tonight.
Great. That's wonderful. They're very generous people. What do we have for other matters?
There's so much going on.
There's so much going on and coming up. I let you talk about all the wonderful stuff that's been happening in music. I know Amy wants to talk about Parent Tech Night.
Yes.
Hmm. One, other people should go first. That's unusual, I don't.
Amy, why don't you talk about parent technology?
So Parent Technology Night is Wednesday night at the Ahern Middle School. This Wednesday, the 5th, at 6:30. Dr. Elizabeth Englander will be our presenter. She'll be speaking about raising children in a digital age, looking at myths, looking at sleep patterns, different resources that are available for parents and things to think about. There's a link that is on the email that went out and the flyer, if parents have questions. I know some questions anonymously have already come in, and she will be addressing those within her presentation. And then at the same time, staying for questions and answers after the presentation. There will be babysitting provided. It is for parents, not for students.
I know, I'm looking forward to it. I think it'll be a big help. I went to Screenagers back in the fall, and that was an amazing documentary, and it just showed me how much I have to learn about managing technology for our family. And I think this will be very helpful for parents, and I urge parents who have very small children and kids heading off to college, that this would be helpful to anybody in, in any of those age groups. So thank you for arranging it, I'm looking forward to it.
Who wants to go next?
I'll go.
As Debbie mentioned before, the World Cultural Night is next Monday night, April 10th, from 6 to 8.
Great.
It's at the Foxborough High School. And next Good, next Friday, the 14th, is Good Friday, which we have off, and then vacation.
That's right, that's exactly right. Chris, do you have anything?
Yeah, I got a few things. I know, no first time, had, they had to cancel.
Correct.
Stephanie's brother died that day, so hopefully they can come back at some other time.
Yeah.
And do their presentation.
I actually spoke to Diana about that this morning at the principal's coffee, and they're, they're, you know, hopeful that they can have them back either this year or at the beginning.
Yeah, we're waiting on their schedule. Obviously, it was the presenters had a family need to cancel, so we're waiting to, to connect with them for another date, and it's up to them. And we are entering testing season, so we're more limited in dates. The end of March was going to work really well for us, but I'm sure we'll find another date, because that is a goal of ours, to have that program as an assembly this spring.
Also, we, I went to Into the Woods with, I know Bruce was there, and Bev, and Deb on Sunday. The show was great, the students were amazing, the costumes, the stage, everything. Yeah, it was a great time. Third, I got my phone socket.
Your pop socket.
Pop socket.
Advertising.
Puts out, it has our Warrior right on it. You can get them at Cindy Jewelers.
Cindy's Jewelers, yeah.
What does that do?
It holds up your phone, so you can.
And you can hold it in your hand like.
And you can hold it like this, and if you have two, you can have your phone up, and watch a little movie or anything like that. But the money goes to the music department.
No, the FMAG.
FMAG.
Foxborough Music Association, it's a booster.
Yes, the Booster Club.
The Booster Club for the music. And also the store next to Waxy's.
The Mayor Boutique.
Mayor Boutique. Oh, they're selling them too?
Yes.
They have them there for $10.
Sure nice.
And then my last one is currently in the State House. There's Bill S. 308, and there's close to 100 legislators already signed up for it. And what they're trying to do is put a three-year moratorium on all statewide testing. And if you are in favor of doing that, you can call your state rep, and you can call your state senator, and encourage them to support Bill S. 308.
All right, you keep us posted on that, Chris.
Moratorium on state testing.
It's created by Mike Rush, a senator from, I think, the Norwood area. He was my high school government teacher.
That would make actually a great question for the debate team, should the.
Just suggesting.
Take that on, Dimitri.
Yeah, you're still here. You both are.
That's it for me.
All right. Thank you, Chris.
Two last things. On Saturday, Tina and I attended the Foxborough Cultural Council reception, which was wonderful. A lot of great turnout in town. And speaking of, on a similar note to Partners in Patriotism, the Cultural Council has given out several grants this year to support the arts in our community.
And in our schools.
In our schools, and privately, and other groups. And I just want to thank them and note that their work in the community is really important. And as I said in my remarks on Saturday, it's wonderful to live and work in a community And as I said in my remarks on Saturday, it's wonderful to live and work in a community that believes in the whole child and believes that these things are important, that believes there's so many ways to be brilliant and we have to be ready for all of those ways. And I think many children find that through the arts. And it's not, it's not good enough to be known just for one aspect of the arts, it's for us to continue to offer more things that engage students. And I was, I was really proud to be part of that on Saturday. Wasn't it a great event?
It was. It really was. I hope, I hope there's going to be a story in the Foxborough Reporter about it because there was such a long list of items that the Foxborough Cultural Council had contributed to, some of which I knew about and some of which I had not, but it was very impressive and they're, they're doing some really, really wonderful things.
And our local friends at FCA taped it so people can watch actually at home.
Oh, great.
Exactly, yeah.
And the last thing is I sent an email out last month to parents in our community that if they have interest in going to an overview of Darkness to Light, which is the training we have on child sexual abuse awareness, raising awareness and working towards prevention, that we've been, as you know, training, we have over 1,200 people in town trained on the two-hour Darkness to Light. Actually, to get the certificate, you've completed the training. But this Wednesday, April 5th, from 5 to 6, we're offering just a simple, one-hour overview of the program. So if there's anybody who has not, does not want to take the full training, as all of our youth coaches in town, all of our staff members have taken, you can go from 5 to 6. We're jointly partnering with the senior center. So we have a small number of Foxborough seniors and a few parents. We didn't get a great response from parents, but I think it's really important to, if you just want the overview and learn a little bit more about it in a very casual informal setting, this is the place to go. So if anybody in the community wants to go to the overview, call the senior center and put your name on the list to reserve a seat.
Thank you for that.
And that same day at noon time, the town, I think you've read in the Foxborough Reporter, is raising the building at the Co Casa River Park that's symbolic of the past and the, the part, the part of the past that's quite painful. So any member of the community, and I know we'll have a good representation from the schools, who wants to go, I think it's a great show of community support for bringing that part to a closure and demolishing that building. So just want to reiterate that. That's what I have.
Okay.
I didn't want to say, not only was I able to see the musical, I also that weekend got to see, got to see Jane.
You saw The Chronicles of Jane?
The Chronicles of Jane.
The High School Theater Guild's production.
The High School, I did. I was able to see that. And it was certainly evident why they came home with awards.
Yes.
Well, and they, that was actually one of the things funded by the, the Foxborough Cultural Council, or in part, so.
And the other thing, just I hope everybody has a restful, warm vacation coming up in a few days.
Thank you, Bev. Bruce, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just a brief comment. You know, I continue to think about our budget as we head toward town meeting and take, you know, seriously a lot of the discussion that went on earlier this spring in regards to our tax rate and examining it. And, you know, I just keep coming away with the impression that we are achieving so many things in this town, whether it's our music and our MICA performance that the, all of our musical groups achieved and the number of which will be going back to Symphony Hall to, due to a gold medal performance. A lot of the sports teams were outside today enjoying the nice weather, kicking off-field hockey and tennis and lacrosse and baseball and everything else that's going on. The debate team tonight, you know, what a fantastic job, award-winning, fantastic job. So I just, I continue to think as hard as I can about what's right and I continue to respond in my own thinking with the message that we've got so many good things going on and I certainly, as a taxpayer, feel good about, about what we achieve with the money that we spend.
I agree with you wholeheartedly. So thank you for bringing...
And when I read our regular minutes and it, I think it was both in Sun Chronicle and Foxborough Reporter about how much we do from sports to arts. And all of it is done with one extra fee.
That is true.
I think that's what public education is about.
I know, but that, that is a compliment to the financial management of, of the district for our schools.
In the town, for supporting it, showing the community as a whole has supported that.
The community's had great support for all of the things that we want to offer children.
Exactly. That is right. Well, Bruce alluded to it, about 400 students participated in the MICA Festival this past week. Over 400 Foxborough students. Not 400 total, 400 Foxborough students participated in the MICA Festival. And as Bruce said, the Symphony Orchestra and the concert band from the high school both received gold medals and will be performing at Symphony Hall, I should say, for the third year in a row, at Symphony Hall on Saturday, April 15th. The orchestra performs at 2:30, the band performs at 4:00 PM. It is free, open to the public.
What's the date, Tina?
Saturday, April 15th. So it'll be the first Saturday of April vacation. So congratulations. Dimitri's going to be there playing his saxophone.
Nice.
I will.
Very exciting.
Congratulations.
Very exciting. And I know Dimitri was there last year with the eighth grade band. So it's, he's a freshman in high school who will have played at Symphony Hall twice.
I think this is like the, however long Mr. Masi's been working here, like 40-something years.
Close to that, yeah.
Yeah, we've gotten gold every single year.
It's pretty impressive. It really is.
And I think we've already talked, they're going to, the Jazz is going to essentially Ellington yet again.
I am going this year.
Nice.
Still the most frequent finalist in a national jazz competition.
It's very exciting. So there are wonderful things going on. I think that's, that is, that's the best way to sum up the end of this meeting. Does anybody have anything else to add? Bill?
Nope.
Okay.
Wish everyone happy holidays.
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Someone would like to second that.
I would like to second that.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of adjourning? 5-0-0. Good night, everybody. Bruce, my...